Mary Helen, you made it on time. That's awesome.
Hey, everybody. All right. We'll give, uh, can you give it one more minute for folks to join and then we'll get started? We were just chatting about how nice it is to have the big yellow ball back in the sky. And a little more, little more warm weather before fall hits us, um, full force.
We're very fortunate to have whatever weather we have because there's probably what eighty, hundred million people suffering from far worse weather effects, so.
Good point.
We're in paradise out here in the Northwest.
Yes, we are. Looks like we have a quorum. I think with that, I'm going to call our September sixth, um, meeting of the urban flood safety and water quality district, uh, board meeting, our work session board meeting to order. I'm Steve Banter, your chair, and let's do roll call.
Nancy Hendrickson.
I'm here.
Steve Banter.
Here.
Eric Mueller.
Here.
Dave Ripma.
Here.
Seth Reeser.
Here.
Ashton Simpson.
Here.
Laurie Stegman.
Here.
Emerald Bog.
Here.
Corky Collier.
Here.
Rochelle Altman.
Here.
Mary Helen Kincaid.
Here.
Tanny Savinson.
Here.
Eric Molander.
Here.
Brent Cartwright.
Here.
Ed Washington. Ed Bob Salinger.
Here.
Heather King.
Here.
We have sixteen board members present.
Wendy, did you start the recording?
Yes, I did.
I'll commend everybody for, um, great attendance today. We, uh, sixteen is, is pretty darn good. Before we get started, I'll just remind folks, this is a work session, not a business meeting, so we're not going to take any votes today. It's an information exchange. Um, time for us to ask questions and, and hear from staff and deliberate, but, um, we do have a, a good agenda and our first order of business, um, while not business, our first order of the meeting. Um, pull that up. Okay, we're going to get a bonds, geo bond, uh, update from Carrie and Bill. Uh, there's uh, information that's been provided in the, the work session packet, um, on this presentation, and with that, I'll just turn it over.
There we go. Uh, yeah, thank you all and good to see you. It's been a little while. So Carrie Sandeman, I am the lead the planning team and environmental program at MCDD and I'm also the project manager for the GeoBond development project. And Bill and I will be providing an update today. You've heard over the last couple of months about our, uh, run up to doing some polling and about the community engagement that we've been conducting over the summer. We're going to kind of bring it back to some of the stuff that you heard in the spring and refresh memories and, and provide some updates on those things. So in particular, I'll do just a very quick update or review of the timeline. It hasn't changed, just a review. And then pass it over to Bill to talk about updates to cost estimates and some new resources that are in your packet. And then we'll look ahead at the path to referral and, uh, what you can expect from us over the next few months. Been seeing this slide, I think, since about January. This from, you know, Seagull at MSH Strategies about the key steps of the bond development process. We are right in the middle and we have all the rest of these in the next couple of months. But our public engagement is ongoing and in many ways we'll continue to communicate with the public and educate about flood risk in the Flood Safe Columbia River Process, but the survey about the GeoBond in particular will close pretty soon here. And very soon here in the next couple of months, we'll be out in the field with polling informed by the feedback that y'all provided at the last meeting. This is another slide you've seen before, same information, but in the timeline format. And I'll come back to you after Bill's presentation to talk about sort of the, the sub dots between there, the information that your staff, uh, is going to provide in order to bring you to that, uh, December vote. So with that, I will pass it over to Bill.
Okay, thank you very much, Carrie. Um, record Bill Owen. I'm the Director of Engineering Operations of the District. And I will, um, walk through a series of slides here, some you have seen before and some that you have not, uh, uh, with the exception of the, uh, of the meeting packet. So, um, I'll try to get through as, as efficiently as I can. So we'll be playing of time for y'all to ask questions and, and deliberate. So this is a reminder that we had, as staff had presented three, um, three, um, bond scenarios uh, for your consideration, uh, ranging from a hundred and seventy-five million as a baseline, uh, up to two hundred and fifty million, uh, for a, a comprehensive flood safety. Uh, we did offer a two hundred million, um, bond scenario, uh, that, uh, uh, represents a sort of a middle ground that includes, uh, uh, several improved and upgraded flood safety measures that, uh, I'll get into here in a moment. So next slide please. So, uh, it's just as a reminder, these bond objectives, um, and what they're intending to do. So, um, these bond pro- scenario projects, uh, are going to be managing flood risk as well as advancing all of the, uh, new statute, uh, purposes, uh, and, uh, the mission, vision, values of the new urban district. Um, so include, the projects include the PMLS cost sharing, uh, cost share funding, um, the levy system upgrades, um, that's associated with those as well as with the FEMA accreditation efforts. Um, there's, uh, work going on to, to do, uh, as part of that, um, do a comprehensive uh, effort to do, uh, to improve the flood safety system, um, as well as making improvements for emergency response and system resiliency. Uh, as you know, the new ORS purposes not only includes flood safety related and emergency response related items, but also, um, it's elements involving the environment, equity, cultural history and so forth. Um, all this information is guided by the Bond Council and, and general county rules. So next slide please. So what did we consider as we, um, pulled together each of the bond scenarios? Well, well, um, of course, we just mentioned the new, um, state statute purposes, um, and we pulled information from other documented engineering assessments um, that the drains just has, um, has worked on themselves or partnered with others. Those include the PMLS reports, um, the FEMA levy accreditation assessments that were done around twenty fifteen, as well as four different, uh, drainage, um, master plans that identified um, problem areas in terms and errors and, and levels, expressions of risk, excuse me. So basing that, using that information, we applied that, uh, with asset management principles to identify um, projects across all districts. Um, and, uh, the outcome of that was this twenty twenty-one uh, assets and liabilities report. I mentioned in the meeting, uh, materials that this, uh, was the primary source of information rather than the CIPs that, uh, that each district continues to, um, examine and approve each year. Uh, and that's primarily because, uh, this, the assets and liabilities report looks at a lo- a longer timeframe, uh, not just a five or ten year window, um, and it, it includes some additional features that, elements that, uh, the CIPs have not considered quite yet. So, uh, the assets and liability report was fundamental, uh, to pulling together projects. Um, in addition, we've, um, inco- uh, leveraged some of the information that, uh, Wolf Water Resources had identified, um, and you've heard, um, much about, uh, about a year ago, so now. Um, and so collectively, uh, that information, uh, has coupled together our projects. Next slide please. Right, so, uh, in all projects, uh, uh, whether it's a hundred and seventy-five or two hundred and fifty million dollar scale, um, we include, uh, things, uh, including, uh, the PMLS work, FEMA accreditation. The law these projects, uh, have multi-objective design features, uh, for, to ultimately, um, uh, improve flood safety. There's nature-based, um, elements in several of these projects. Um, as well as, uh, saving a functional facility for operations, including an emergency operations, um, center as envisioned. Um, we also recognize that, uh, there's a need for community oversight, um, not just with the elected board or appointed board, but with the, um, uh, with, with a proposed, uh, oversight committee that, uh, that would advise that board. And, um, I see a hand up. Um, if you don't mind, let me go ahead and finish the slides and I'll circle back. Uh, that's, if that's acceptable. So next slide please. So let me walk through each bond scenario, um, uh, quickly. At the hundred and seventy-five million, um, these include, um, uh, pump station improvements, the pump station capacity, um, for internal drainage, uh, purposes and, um, in addition to the common elements I was just talking about. There's also improvements to, um, pump station power redundancy, um, uh, as well as, um, uh, so including some, um, uh, connections as well as, uh, portable generators. Um, and, uh, let's see, as we, uh, so I'm looking at my notes here. It does also add some resiliency to the existing levees, um, surface by improving, um, the vegetation on many of those, um, uh, landward side of the levees where it's basically sand right now and grass is, um, does not grow very well and that's problematic for us for longevity. So next slide please. This is a, a graphic you've seen before regarding, uh, showing the, um, uh, all the locations of the project elements, all the way from, um, the west side where, uh, it starts with the, um, the setback levy, uh, adjacent to the west edge of the, the districts. Um, and then continues all the way over with a series of levy and, um, pump station improvements uh, out to Troutdale where there's, uh, improvements, uh, right at the, uh, the far eastern end of the levy system there. Uh, the levy upgrades, um, are intended to be, are, are designed to meet, uh, the new meta-federal, uh, flood safety standards um, and leverages the hundred million dollars in federal funding, uh, that's, that goes along with it. Uh, let's see, yep, and I think that's enough for this slide. Go ahead and the next slide please. At the two hundred million dollar, um, bond scenario, uh, what's, what's added? Well, we've added, uh, the replacement of several of the largest pumps in the system, um, that, uh, protects, uh, areas in, uh, East Multnomah County. Um, but doesn't replace all of them, the places for the six of them. Um, and, uh, th- those were there, uh, added because, uh, they'll be nearing the end of their life cycle. Um, we have, uh, in addition to that, uh, we've added, uh, several, um, efforts to, uh, replace, uh, the tow drains uh, on the, uh, on the levy side. As you might recall, these are pipes in the levy that help, um, capture water that seeps through the levy and then, um, captures it and, and drains it out in a controlled manner. Uh, and there's areas near the both of Portland and Troutdale airports, um, that, uh, can benefit from this. Next slide please. So this is a similar, um, uh, graphic that you saw previously includes all the other elements in there. There's a couple of longer, um, this greenish, uh, lines on here that represent the tow drain, um, upgrades, um, as well as a recognition of, uh, of the two pumps or two pump stations that will have, um, improved, um, pumping systems. So next slide. And finally, at the two hundred and fifty million dollar, uh, level, this is, recall, this is more of a comprehensive effort to provide, uh, flood safety. So it captures, uh, el- other elements that we know will eventually have to replace and, um, this is proactively uh, replacing some of those assets before they fail, uh, or at least they're expecting to fail. Um, so that includes the final two of the largest pumps and the two, uh, pump stations I referenced earlier. Um, it includes money to replace the concrete flood walls, emergency closures and pen one and pen two. Uh, as well as adding, uh, more information or more, uh, funding for tow drains, uh, and additional, uh, investments in flood, uh, in flood storage projects and including flood plain, uh, wetlands, uh, that we were, um, we envisioned will benefit, uh, flood safety. Next slide. Getting us another graphical version of what, uh, I just described. I don't think I need to, um, reference this too much. Let's go on to the final slides. Yeah, and here's the, the final version of the graphics. So this gives you, if you need a quick, uh, image to understand what projects are proposed at each level. Um, this is a good, um, graphic that I've, I've referenced frequently in order to understand the, the differences between, um, the baseline, um, bond scenario and the improved and comprehensive versions. So those are all slides that you've seen before. We go to the next slide please. Um, so what's changed since, um, Carrie and I have last talked to you? Well, uh, what we've done is, um, gone back and had, uh, a third party review the costs that, um, we had presented earlier, uh, and, uh, the long and short of it is that the, um, the approach that we took were consistent with best practices, uh, in the cost estimating field, uh, and, and, uh, while, uh, that's the case, they did make a couple of a minor, um, propos- minor, um, changes and we've, uh, applied those. Um, the end result is that, uh, we're not recommending any changes to the projects themselves. But the actual, the, if you looked, uh, and compared the costs between a version back in April, I believe, and, um, the current version, uh, you will see changes. And so this next slide, uh, walks through why that might be. Um, so the first thing is that we, um, applied an escalation factor to the PMLS cost estimate. So that is why that, uh, that number, uh, is higher than what it used to be. Um, we did, had not included real estate considerations for non-PMLS projects. So these would be pump stations or levees or, or, um, where tow drains might be, be improved. Uh, we're hopeful that we can work with our partners to minimize real estate costs, um, to capture new easements uh, or property purchases, but, uh, we felt, uh, it was a good practice to include the real estate costs here, just in, um, excuse me, um, just to cover ourselves. Um, there's consistency now across projects, um, uh, additional consistency across projects about, uh, escalation contingency and other factors. What I would consider as soft costs, uh, which would be design permitting, um, construction management inspection and so forth. Uh, just a note about the contingency side, um, that, uh, the contingency, a, a project contingency will vary, uh, depending on the project because of, uh, where, how, where that project is in its maturity. So if it's, um, if it's just, um, past the point of a conceptual design, it will get a much higher contingency than, uh, a project that is, uh, a fault that's, um, has progressed, uh, farther and, uh, down the design path. So examples would be the PMLS projects have had quite a bit of work done, uh, even though they're barely at thirty percent design and probably be a little bit less than that. Um, so that type of project would get, um, a twenty-five percent contingency. Most of the projects have a fifty percent contingency, uh, which is consistent with what the, um, this third party, um, a reviewer proposed, uh, uh, it was within the range they proposed. They had actually proposed, um, anything uh, well, up a range, uh, a little less than fifty and up to sixty percent. Uh, so I chose something around fifty percent. Um, I, um, did reach, thanks to Corky Collier's suggestion, I did, uh, reach out to a local, uh, firm that's done a lot of development work in this area. And they've been able, they were able to make some refinements on the square foot costs, uh, for, um, the proposed, uh, the shop building and the EOC. And so I applied those, uh, estimates, uh, for the, um, for that, uh, for that particular project. That project, uh, is, uh, kind of the exception to the rule in terms of the contingency. I have a least amount of information and confidence about the scope of that project. Um, and so I, I bumped the contingency up to seventy-five percent for that project. Um, we have a, certainly have a, a enough information to feel confident this is, this is, uh, this is needed and what the square footage is. Um, but there's, as those of you who have done, um, uh, capital projects with buildings, you know, that scope and cost can change. Um, you know, quite a bit over the course of design. Um, and finally, uh, what else would affect the costs? Well, that's the sequencing of the project. So we, um, took a, a finer, uh, pointed, uh, pen and, uh, and, um, adjusted the cau- uh, the sequence of the products, of the projects, excuse me, um, based on staffing availability and ta- anticipated phasing of projects. Um, that's particular, um, for the PMLS projects. Um, as well as a couple of others that are dependent upon finishing a design. So the PIR pump station, for instance, was moved out a little bit and one of the FEMA projects was, I think, adjusted by a year. So those are the main themes of why some of the projects changed. Um, and I'm certainly happy to answer questions at the end. Uh, next slide please. Right, so, um, we'll continue to refine, uh, these projects and you should expect that that's, that will, uh, that will happen over the course of design. Uh, and, um, we'll make sure that, um, that, uh, the board and the, oh, the, the Oversight Committee is aware why those project, um, costs and scopes might change over time. Um, but that's just part of the, uh, of the capital, uh, project process. Um, and hopefully you, uh, feel somewhat, um, comfortable with, uh, the approach here. As I referenced, uh, we will have continued oversight, not only by the, uh, urban board, but also this Oversight Committee that, uh, we intend to initiate in addition to the internal, um, checks that staff will provide, um, over time as well. Um, we have added a couple of, well, we've added actually, uh, fact sheets for all projects. Um, so the next couple of slides, uh, show versions of those, uh, of those projects. Uh, so if we can move to the next slide, we can walk through those. So here's, and you'll, you can see all of these in your meeting packets. They're in portrait view as opposed to landscape here. But the first version here, um, this, these are supposed to just be reference sheets, um, for you all as you, uh, talk to, uh, to others in your, um, organizations or uh, entities about what projects could be part of these, uh, these bond scenarios. Um, so we give the costs, uh, what, um, bond scenario they're part of, what the problem state, there's a problem statement in here uh, and what the purpose of the project is to address that problem, that project. This particular, uh, fact sheet, uh, is the PMLS ones, probably the most complicated of the ones that, uh, we've included. So the next slide has a lot of text and I don't intend to read any of this, but you are welcome to look at this at your own leisure. Uh, getting this in your meeting packet, but it outlines from projects A through S, uh, all of the, um, components of the PMLS, uh, system. So. Let's move on from this busy slide. Uh, so the next one is the, uh, example from the FEMA accreditation on projects. Recall, there are three of them. This one happens to be up closest to the MCD office. And, uh, it's, uh, is a levy improvement on the waterward side because it's too, uh, the slope is, uh, too steep. Uh, it's included in all projects because it's a FEMA project in this case, problem statements, project purpose. Um, and, uh, you'll note in the project purpose that there is, uh, usually, uh, this one is in many projects, there's a statement um, nodding to the multi-objective nature of a lot of these flood safety projects where we're trying to include uh, climate resiliency, environmental improvements, cultural history, um, as well as, um, uh, equity considerations uh, as we move forward. Yeah, I'm sorry about the, I'm getting some background noise and see if I can, I can move. Next slide please. So, uh, the last, this is another, this is the last example of, uh, the fact sheets. Um, this is a pump station project. You have the costs, uh, what scenario it's in, the problem and purpose statement. This one, this one's Schmier Road Pump Station and does not have a capacity issue. It does have, um, issues, structural issues in the substructure where the wet well is, as well as aging infrastructure. So that's what's driving the costs and the, the purpose of the project here. So I think with that, I'm finished and I'm going to relocate so I can, uh, uh, get away from some outside noise.
Sure, and I'll, uh, take us home here. If you don't mind, Bob, we can totally go back to that. I'm just going to take about a lot like a minute or so, um, to wrap us up and then I'm happy to go back to any of the, the prior slides. Um, but before we finished our update today, I wanted to give y'all a preview of what's coming up and it is your staff's objective to make sure that you have the information that you need to make a decision and, and cast a vote in December on whether and to refer a bond measure and what size of bond measure to refer. Uh, it's our objective that you're, have that information in a form that's easy to digest, that you can share with your stakeholders and the folks that you look to, to inform your decisions and that you have it as soon as we do. It's certainly an efficient timeline, uh, that's driven by necessity of when we need to start, uh, submitting forms and, um, formal things to the state in order to hit the May twenty twenty-four election, but hopefully over the next few months, you'll get all of those things. And specifically, and these are essentially in order, at your next board meeting, you're going to hear from Piper Sandler and Hawkins, Delfield and Wood. Those are our financial advisor and bond counsel respectively, and they're going to walk you through the legal requirements and bond issuance process, uh, updated estimates on the cost of voters. They can, spoiler alert, they haven't changed. Um, but the revisions that they're doing because we want to bring you the most updated information and also make sure that kind of you're seeing what decision are you making in December and what are some of the parts of the formal issuance process that happen after and if the voters approve the bond. Uh, so that's next meeting. Then hopefully in mid-October, we really hope you'll have the poll results as soon as we have them from FM three. That'll be the, the top lines around what folks are willing, willing to pay, uh, compelling messages, priorities for the voters who will, uh, ultimately decide if, uh, the bond is passed. And then the survey results from the community engagement activities that we've been doing all summer and sending mailers and, and being at community events, uh, from our expert support at Cascadia Partners. Uh, based on that information, the polling and the survey and what we hear from you in response to those, we'll draft the ballot, uh, resolution. Uh, the measure is something we're testing in the poll and trying to really refine down to the word. And in that same time period, we're able to provide briefings. We'll be briefing the Drainage District Boards. We're available and very much encourage board members to request if there are folks, your financial teams, uh, your leadership, et cetera, that we can provide more information for. We're happy to do that. And then based on all of that, you'll see a staff recommendation at the first, uh, work session in December and a scheduled vote for December fourteenth. Just as soon as we vote, if y'all decide to refer the bond, we'll also do a training on the legal issues around campaigning because staff's role changes pretty dramatically, uh, from pre and post referral. Uh, so this is our last slide. Happy to open it up for questions for Bill or I at any point of the, uh, presentation that we've given today. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, uh, Bill. Before I turn it over for questions and I've got the list started here, um, I'll just say that, uh, I'll just say that uh I want to commend uh both of you and and staff for uh this information that you present. It's extremely clear, but also if you go into your board packet and you start to go through these project sheets. I think you're gonna find, I know it's exactly what I was uh asking for as far as level of appropriate detail to determine. Which projects, as I'm reading through these, we it it kind of gauges the importance of these projects and 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 or which bond scenario they fit. To give me a really informed way to um support, you know, which level of of bond that we're um. Shooting for as as a board, as a district. So thank you guys, um extremely well done. There's a ton of information there, but I think it's at the appropriate level. Um, so. Dig in on your leisure and um form your opinion. We're gonna start. I know we had Mary Helen's hand up first. Um. We'll go her first and then we'll go Bob second and then I've got everyone else in order. So Mary Helen, go ahead.
Mine's kind of quick. Um, I'll. The first reference that you made about Wolf Water Resources report. Um, nature-based, is that the report that they did with Levy Ready Columbia several years ago or is it a new report? Is there new information from that report? And then the other question is more when you speak to specifics about the Schmier Road Pump Station upgrade. It says pumps will exceed their service life and need to be replaced to ensure consistent flood protection. Well. How imminent is that? Um, will need to be replaced? That you you named some of the things that are wrong, but are they seriously wrong and? Is it more important to move that from that scenario, you know? I I I guess I'm not getting or not understanding and I'll wait to hear all the other questions. But I'm not understanding the details that other people seem to be understanding. Because when you say will exceed, everything will exceed something at some point, but. It's like, how serious is it? Is something we need to pay attention to right now? Or can it wait? All right. And obviously, we can't predict the future, but that's. Those are the two ones about the levy, about the Levy Ready Columbia and um Wolf Water Resources report. If it's a new report or is it the one from when Levy Ready Columbia met with them over a period of time?
So let me, let me start um. To answer that question and Carrie can chime in or I have any gaps. I saw in the uh in the chat that uh. The report is uh the one referenced uh that, I'm sorry, right on the um. The port was dated July twenty twenty-two, so it's just a year ago, not several years ago. Um, so it was about a year ago and um not sure if they or um someone in our staff um made a presentation to this board. Um, to the uh about their um about their findings and so they.
They had also worked with Levy Ready Columbia back when they were meeting. So I I if it's a new report. I'll go back and look at all my documents and look.
All right, very good. Yeah, please do so and and give us a holler if you have questions about that. Um, and I I'm I'm confident there's some presentation materials about that uh in in your packets as well. Um, regarding the Schmier Road Pump Station, uh it's the pumps themselves uh that need to be, that will need to be replaced. It is not. I don't believe it's in um uh pen two C I P because it's not in um the next ten years. It's just I I I have to go back and double check, but I think it's in like years eleven through fifteen or so where we're expecting to replace those. Um, and uh a as you well know, there's only two pumps there. Um, the motors thankfully have just been replaced. And so the motors themselves don't have to be replaced, but the pumps, the columns, um that water comes up. Uh, and then out of the pump station, those are the the these, the features that be replaced around that time thing.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna go Heather next and then Bob.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I just want to start by thanking the staff for all their hard work and um the thoroughness of the information that was presented. I very much appreciate it. However, uh as a representative, someone who works directly in the watershed and runs the watershed council, um. I have a huge issue with the fact that any work that's to be done on the environment is listed as. Complementary projects on every single bond scenario and they are not named in. Like they are not named out. These are the things that we're gonna do. I understand that this is a summary. However, one more time, the environment is getting screwed. And the environmental like the the restoration projects and the work that can be done as well as there's not any mention that I could see. In doing any kind of Jedi or cultural history work. In regards to the way it's written in this law or anything that's been discussed by this board of directors. So I understand that, you know, the environment always takes a backseat. However. I also think that it's ridiculous that they're complementary projects and that they're not named out. And because we are not specifically listed in the sixteen point seven million dollar budget environmental improvement projects. Or restoration work. This is the only shot that we have to get this work done and to get it funded. So I really want to know why. Uh, what your thought process is, what these projects might be. Um. I understand and agree that this work needs to be done. However. There's other stuff that needs to be done and looked at in respect to what's in this law and the work that this board. Move now and moving forward should be doing.
So let me uh appreciate the um the feedback. My guess is there may be one or two others that have similar thoughts. So let me try. Try to address those and uh again, Carrie can can fill in gaps. Um, so there are a a there are several um. Ways that the environmental components are included uh in the projects. You're correct. Uh, there's the complementary projects that are part of the P M L S work. Um, that was not the focus of the Corps of Engineers. Uh, design. So um we recognize that the local partnerships that we have here in in our area. Um, feel that those are very valuable. So we were proposing to add additional funding to supplements with the the course. Um, um, base ma uh design is. And so that's, that's the complementary projects. Uh, the second piece in all scenarios, we have between, was it uh Carrie like ten, between ten and nineteen million dollars? Or um. I'm I'm sorry.
Twelve to nineteen, it's twelve million in the one seventy-five and two hundred million scenario and nineteen million in the two fifty.
Correct. Thank you. Um, so those are for floodplain um storage um projects. Um, and that's the idea of of creating additional wetland areas uh within the districts um to capture um that will. Um, provide environmental improvements, uh but also um to act as flood storage uh where where is needed. And the third piece I would note um is that all projects um. With uh, let's see, I I'm sorry, it's not all projects. A a vast majority of projects have been been. We've included, um, I think it's a thirteen percent um increased cost. Um, to capture uh additional design elements that would include environmental concepts, cultural history. Uh, and climate change resilient uh climate change elements. I just don't know what those are right now. Um, and uh we do know from the Wolf Water Resources um presentation. That those exist. I want to make sure we have funding available to implement those. Um, but without digging into those individual projects, um I I I didn't have a chance honestly to pull together costs. So in lieu of that, that's how we accommodated for that. Carrie, is there anything else you wanted to to add to help respond?
Those are the the big pieces. I just direct folks. Uh, so we do have a summary sheet in your packet. It's page forty-eight. Uh, that is around the floodplain storage concept and shows the how those costs are. Uh, gonna show up in the proposed bond project. And the other one is we have also between one point five and three million for what we called. Uh, levy maintenance bench improvements. And so that's really a dual purpose. Uh, one purpose is we have some areas that are really hard to access and are interested in having a maintenance bench on the waterward side. But once we have that overbuild area, that's somewhere we can plant more diverse vegetation and create nearshore habitat. So that one has uh environmental elements that mix in with the flood safety benefit as well. I think you, Heather, really appreciate the the comment and the attention to this and we certainly look to the board's direction for. Uh, other opportunities.
On that very last point, um, pen two is actually investing money this year. Um, to get a, have a better understanding what those levy bench projects entail. Uh, and so uh they have multiple benefits, uh including um improved maintenance uh for our staff to. On the waterward side of the levees. But there uh is a sizable part of that project to understand what is. What would it entail to um include uh more environmental features like large wooden debris? Uh, or potential trees down by the waterfront or shrubs down the waterfront, um right at the water's edge, excuse me. Um, and that information is gonna be invaluable to help us uh refine what those costs would be. So. Um, yeah, so we're, we're moving down that direction. Um, and yeah, and hopefully that uh addresses that resp- that that uh responds to your comment.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Carrie. Bob, your handout was up earlier, so I'm gonna call on you next.
Yeah, thanks. Um, you know, uh, first of all, thanks for the presentation. Uh, Heather uh covered a lot of what. I would have said too, uh, and I appreciate the response. Uh, I I still have significant concerns though. Um, couple of things. One, uh, the U S Army Corps of Engineers, when we went down that road and as I recall, I was one person that was not supportive of that. Did not include environment or equity in their planning. They were very explicit about that. And I feel like we're still laboring under that paradigm. And as we went through that process, we kept being told, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. We're gonna develop a whole robust environmental piece and equity piece. Separate from that. But unfortunately, that continues to provide provide the foundation for everything we do. And I feel like we're still on that track where, as Heather said. We're doing, you know, add-ons and uh. You know, things that are complementary, things that kind of fit in as opposed to really developing robust. Environmental and equity strategies. I also think we're relying on this um. Plan that we're supposed to develop someday uh as kind of an excuse for not really advancing more substantive proposals. And I don't think we should be doing that. Uh, we have plenty of information. We can turn this into brain surgery, but it's not. We know the kinds of projects and where they would go. There's plenty of data to do that. And we can build that in uh now as opposed to kind of leaving it vague. Um, so I guess, you know, what I would be looking for right now, and I do appreciate the floodplain section, but uh. Uh, the flood storage section, but I I think. You know, I'm looking for a lot more specificity. Uh, I'm looking for maps that actually show projects on them in a real discreet way. Um, I'm looking for probably a a higher commitment on environment and I'm looking for a significant uh. Articulation of how we're integrating equity in, because I didn't hear that at all in the response. Uh. And I think those are gonna be essential elements to go out and sell this to folks and then to flip back and hold ourselves accountable. Because on the flip side, if if it's not very clearly articulated and committed to. I know way too well that they will get engineered out. When the costs go up. The environmental pieces and the equity pieces will be the first things that get disappeared. Uh, because those are the easiest things to eliminate and take off the top. And as long as they're thought of as bells and whistles and complimentary. Uh, they're gonna be relegated to that kind of uh potential loss. So. Uh, you know, again, really appreciate all the work and I think we've come a long way, but I really do think we need a lot more specificity. Uh, across the board on on the environment and equity.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, Eric.
My microphone off here. Uh, I guess I had a a question or maybe a a suggestion on. I don't know what the slide number it is, but on the uh in the packet, it's page thirty-five. It was one of the. First ones you showed where it's the P L M S project. And and I guess as I had gone through the packet earlier, I it threw me a little bit because kind of on some of the other pages. Like the pump station, what we were talking about earlier, it says estimated total cost eight million two hundred thirty-four thousand. If I go back to the one for the P L M S, it says the estimated total cost fifty-eight thousand five seventy-eight. Which I think what it really means is that's the estimated. Total cost that we have to come up with from the bond or that's our local match. Um, because it threw me because, you know, being a smart aleck about it, I. I can hear somebody say, well, we're gonna get a hundred million dollars from the feds. We've got forty-two million dollars left over to spend on other stuff. Which isn't really what I'm sure you're trying to communicate. So I I guess maybe if we can put some sort of. In parentheses next to that number. Local match or local cost or something. Thanks.
Sure, yeah, no problem. That definitely is the local match. Um, and my connection's unstable, so I turned my camera off, but if it's still not coming across, I'll just leave it to Bill.
Nothing to add. Uh, appreciate the suggestion.
Thanks, Eric.
Uh, yeah, just two points. Uh. Follow up on uh what Heather and Bob were saying. It would be great if um there could be a little car. A carve out for which costs are related to environmental restoration. Was based on what Bill said, he said there was. The flood storage project was twelve million to nineteen million. And he said thirteen percent of everything else. So I just did some quick math. It sets comes around thirty or forty million dollars of a two hundred million dollar scenario. And so it's a lot of money and there's not a lot of specificity. And so if we could get a. Maybe a breakdown of what exactly is included that's in the bond package that's related to. Um, that uh that'd be helpful. Uh, and then the second point is kind of a broader one. Um. In related to, in relation to the timeline and rollout. We're taking this in front of partner organizations and for me, that's our city council. Um, you guys are wanting to do that in September to November. Um, my concern is that I think that the bond information is. And I just want to echo what Steve said, very well done and very, you know, far along, but I want to reiterate the point that. Uh, if we take, if I took that in front of my council, I'd get quite, I'd get questions on the operating revenue and the operating expenditures. Because they don't look at it as a separate three-track process. They want to know about all of it. And so I'm a little concerned going in front of them without having some more detail on. All three of those tracks to be able to hit that. So that's my comments.
Um, if I could respond on the uh add-on percentage, I'll note that it isn't for all of the projects. It's for. The non-P M L S and FEMA projects because P M L S, we don't get to make those decisions. And so we did add the complementary project line, which is um three million dollars, but it's for the ones. That are within our system and that we would be managing. Uh, so it is um not that, you know, thirteen percent of that full package. I'd also love to direct folks out. We can resend this out, but the maybe. We'll see. Hopefully we can update. We'll update the table so it has the most recent cost estimates. But we gave you a a pretty big packet on the April twentieth meeting. And there's a section in there that talks about what we mean by integrating the new district mandates into project design and provide some examples. From other places like TriMet and Metro where they have done that. Uh, and then also a section on the equity and social justice. And I don't mean to say that this is uh final or that there aren't ways to improve it, uh but just to make sure folks know that. Uh, that has been distributed and I will try to get the all of those figures updated so that that can go back out with the new. Numbers as well.
Thanks, Carrie. Nancy.
Carrie, I really appreciate that. Um. Sort of saying it's in this other big long packet and you'll send it out with updated numbers. I think that's really great. I think there's this inherent tension with changing to, oh, we're gonna do all of our work this way. And then being specific on what it actually is. Because it does and sometimes, well, sometimes, almo- almost always, often. It ends up that, oh, yeah, well, we don't have time to do such and so, the environmental justice piece, the equity piece. The um complementary environmental work piece like. Like I think I heard someone say engineered out, like that does happen very, very often. And so in order to hold. Like one of the way we, ways we sold this entire district was that it would have these. New mandates. I forget what we ended up calling them, but um but we need to be accountable to those. So that it's not just like, oh, yeah, we spent a lot of money on environmental permits. So that was the environmental part. Because it's not. That's the part that you needed to do to get the work done. So um, thank you. I will be taking another look at that. Uh, Carrie, and I do look forward to an update. I think. I definitely think the work that you all have been producing is really excellent. I appreciate that it takes a lot to put it into something that we can understand coming from our various different perspectives and not being in the weeds. Um, but as a board, uh, I feel like, uh, the overall direction, and I know we're in different places on it, but the overall direction of complying with our new, uh, legislation, being able to fund it, um, both on the capital side and the operating side, because you can't do work differently if it's not operationalized and that takes operating money. So, um, I will, like I say, I will look at that and I just want to echo, uh, some of the tensions around saying, yes, we're going to do this, but not having, um, specific things that we can, uh, I guess maybe metrics to hold us accountable. So.
Yeah, thanks, Nancy. I, I appreciate, I definitely appreciate that at a pretty deep level. I think knowing that we will do a watershed plan, that we're legally required to do a watershed planning effort, uh, is really where we intend to identify the specific projects that we would use that twelve to nineteen million dollars of floodplain storage for channel improvements or wetlands, et cetera. And we haven't had the opportunity to go through that and identify those locations that are going to be strategically really beneficial and also to work through the partnerships that we can use to leverage those funds and those opportunities with our many other, you know, partners and, and the work that they do around uh, the environment. I will say, you know, I think it's a, what I'm, one of the things I'm taking away and I'm hearing from a number of y'all's comments is what are the accountability mechanisms that we can provide? Now, you know, so that to, to elevate these statements beyond words on the summary sheet, you know, are there ways where what we're saying carries through? Uh, and so what are some of those tools? So I, I'm, um, happy to look into that and, and think about providing those options for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Carrie. Um, Eric.
I'm unmuted. All right. So first of all, thank you very much for this. I think that it really is good, bringing all of this hard work into very clear focus. Um, I'm also delighted that the, uh, local match has only gone up from roughly fifty million to sixty million, uh, with the additional level of, um, design that has gone in. That gives me a great deal of comfort in the total, uh, that we would end up spending on the PMLS. Carrie, what, what is the total for all the FEMA-related projects?
Yeah, I'll pull up the thing and give you a specific number, but it's around forty million.
All right, so forty. So out of the one seventy-five to two hundred million dollars, the majority of this is going for PMLS and for FEMA, right? All right. So let's, let's start with that. And then, um, these, these project estimates, those are all in twenty twenty-three dollars? Or have they been inflated for when the work would actually occur?
So, um, yeah, originally, you can appreciate this, originally the costs were based upon when the, the projects were published, the projects, the cost assessments were first produced. So I had to move them all to the common, um, twenty twenty-three dollars first, right? And then I escalated from there. And so, uh, to answer your question, it's the latter. I had to, uh, estimate approximately when those projects would be, uh, and would start.
Right. And so
I inflated them accordingly.
Right. And so we would apply a five percent inflation factor. And if it starts ten years from now, you would have that cumulative inflation number in your estimate. So this sounds like you've done a really, um, superior job of giving us a, a bond package that we know will cover inflation and future escalation. And I want to thank you for that. Um, it, the, the question on the oversight committee, I'm going to hold for, um, when we have counsel. I just want to get into some sort of understanding of what that role would be. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. Let's go to Tanny.
Um, thank you, Steve. A quick question for Bill. Bill, it looks like we've moved a lot of the toe drain work into the, I guess I'd call the hot, high-octane model, the two hundred and fifty million. And, um, it's always seemed in the past that those are pretty critical to the functionality of the system. And I was just wondering why uh, it looks like we're moving like twenty-some million that far down the road. Can we not do that in the lower models?
We could, um, but if you ask me personally, if that's the right approach, I would, I would probably steer clear of that. The, the pipes are older. Um, but they're, um, those pipes, the, the toe drains are older, but they're not at the point of failure. And they have some pretty long, um, design life or useful life. And, um, my sense is that replacing those pipes won't be needed for, you know, at least ten years, if much, if not much longer. So I included those and sorry, the rest of us included those, um, to be a proactive measure and in case where those, uh, those fail. Um, and, uh, we still can, um, we still can use, um, those functionality. There's actually even a question whether or not if we had, if they ended up failing, whether or not we'd actually replaced the, um, that area with additional pipe or just replace it with much larger rock. Um, and, um, become almost like a reservoir, um, and then, and have pipes, um, um, drain that, uh, rock inside of the levee. So if, um, I, I appreciate the thoughts. Uh, it, it's just, to me, it just doesn't feel right to replace them that early because they have more useful life. They're con- a lot of them are concrete. It's concrete in the fifties. And so some of the concrete that was put in that era did, doesn't last very long. Uh, as long as maybe some others, uh, did like in the twenties or so for, for some weird reason, the city Portland is sees that over and over again. Um, but sorry, that's a long response saying, I don't think it's right to, um, to replace those. Um, now, given some of the other projects that are, are listed, which I do think have, um, a higher need and higher risk.
Okay, great. Thanks. So we're looking at, you know, sixty million for the match and forty million for FEMA. Right? So that, that basically ties up a hundred. And if we were in a two hundred million dollar package, what would our total contingency be?
Yeah, so I don't have that number in front of me, but it would, it would be some weighted average between, um, those, those individual project contingencies, right? So I reference a range of, of contingencies where there's twenty-five and fifty different. So I'd have to have to kind of calculate, uh, what that would be. So the, the remainder probably, the contingencies are going to be closer to fifty percent. Um, because most of those projects, um, are the non-PMLS, PMLS projects have that type of contingency because it just, they, they just haven't been, um, examined that closely. Um, and so it needs a, a higher contingency.
And so we would anticipate most of that money would probably be spent at the end of the day.
I hope not, uh, but, uh, because of the maturity of the projects, um, I, I mean, a lot of these are like a ten percent or less. So we just, we don't, we don't have a lot of good information, uh, to come up, to base the, the cost on. Uh, and so, um, just on my own experience and probably experience from others here on this call, um, cost coming out of the planning level is not the final cost. And so you need some contingency in order to accommodate for the increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Tanny. Let's go to Rochelle.
Thanks. Okay. My first question is probably me playing catch-up as a, a new board member. Uh, can you remind me of the time horizon for the bond? You said the CIP, CIP, um, budget looks at a ten-year horizon. So what is the bond time horizon?
Uh, we're assuming a ten-year horizon as well, but the, the, the difference is the start point, right? So we, you know, CIP contingency, CIPs are from the date when they were approved. We're talking a couple of years outs or maybe two years outs. Um, and then I've had to project out what needs to be replaced. So that'd be years eleven, twelve plus or so.
Okay. And then my second question is, uh, there were a number of the one-pagers for the projects or for explaining different tiers, what you get for the higher level bond scenarios that have language to the effect of, um, uh, let's see, you know, proactive replacement or proactive work will save X million dollars in expenses compared to deferral. And I'm just curious if you can give a, a, a rough statement, you know, how much of that increased? How much of that cost savings comes from doing the work now and avoiding inflation of cost versus is that is a large part of the safe cost coming from not having to do piecemeal repairs and then replacement later? Um, just hoping you can say a bit more about what the, the savings are.
Yeah, it's, it's completely based on inflation or escalation.
Okay.
As opposed to, as opposed to piecemeal piece. You're right. You're right. Steve, this right. So if you piecemeal out, for instance, if you only place two or the four pumps, uh, in pump station four, you're going to be, um, duplicating some administrative costs and soft costs with, uh, project management and design and so forth. It'll be more efficient, uh, sorry, if you, if you do that twice, replace two now and two later. Um, but the, the basis for those costs that you see in the, in the back sheets are strictly based on inflation escalation.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill, thanks Rochelle. This has been really, really, uh, informative and a really good discussion on the bond uh, projects. So thank you, staff. Thank you. Um, it's going to have all the confidence. It's going to enable us to digest this and, and come back with some really productive, um, direction, uh, going forward. Uh, we're a little bit over time, but, uh, time to transition now to our other big main topic, which is operating revenue. Um, I think I'm going to turn it over to Jim first and he'll, um, turn it over to staff.
So our objective, thank you, Steve. Thank you, everyone, for the bond conversation. Um, our objective today is to give you as much time as possible to discuss the operating revenue scenarios that staff has recommended. And I want to remind you that the decision staff is asking you to consider is to authorize us to seek legislative modifications to ORS five fifty. And just as a reminder, those modifications would involve allowing the continued use of assessments on the existing managed floodplain consistent with the legacy districts. Would also give the new district the authority to impose a flood safety benefit tax on our local government partners, the cities and the county for unincorporated areas. So that's the decision we are seeking from you. We know that through the legislative process, there'll need to be some negotiations and some flexibility in order to get agreement and passage of a bill. So there'll be continued opportunities for the sport to shape that. Um, I wanted to just briefly remind you that where we are today is the result of almost a decade of work by all of you and your jurisdictions. That we are facing increasing risk from extreme weather and an aging system. That we are out of compliance with federal standards for flood safety. That we have an opportunity to obtain significant over a hundred million dollars in federal investment in our system. And that we've provided you with an operating forecast that is essentially status quo with three additional components. One is inflation, which we all know is real. The other two are we put in an operating fund or contingency operating fund, which is really critical to our cash flow needs and our ability to respond to the unknown. And we've also included an operating capital line. And one of the reasons that we're in this conversation today is because there's been inadequate operating capital to take care of the system. The one other component, so there's really four, is we do have five hundred, uh, thousand dollars a year in operating to help advance the new mandates. We've had some discussion about that earlier. In your packet today, you'll have a due diligence memo that describes the work that we did as your staff to try and implement the original spirit and letter of ORS five fifty. That was the fee or service charge construct. So you have a fairly lengthy document that describes our effort to try and make that work. And, uh, all of that due diligence essentially found for us that there was some significant legal risk to that approach. It had never been done anywhere else. That was technically complicated and prone to potential breakage and failure. That for a variety of legitimate reasons, it was politically complicated and challenging, and that it was very expensive to collect the revenue. So we've come up with a scenario that we believe embodies the spirit of ORS five fifty. We recognize that, uh, the approach we're recommending maintains some compression impacts. And we've worked with our East County partners as recently as last week to provide some evaluation of what that assessment compression impact might be for them. We've also identified that alternative approaches to not using the assessments are likely to cost East County more money than the assessment-based approach that we're recommending. We have in your packet today identified the operating cost by jurisdiction so that you all can see how these costs would be born. And we've also provided information that shows that the relative allocation of costs for our system are consistent with the status quo. So each of the jurisdictions is contributing essentially close to the same thing. I want to acknowledge that what villages aren't paying and they're going to pay. I want to acknowledge the county because they're going to have to pay. And Lake Oswego as well. So we have some new contributors that are very helpful. And so, uh, we feel like we've really embodied this, the spirit and the direction that the board has, um, established for us. We've shared with East County, we're, we're working with our collection partners to iron out all the details related to the complexity of collecting revenue. And so really what we want to do today is give you time to discuss what we've put before you. We've presented this information a couple of different times. It's all in your packet. And I just want to remind you, the decision we're asking you to make at your next meeting is to allow us to proceed to try and come up with an operating revenue collection system that is legally feasible, technically possible and financially responsible. And we think we have a proposal that essentially does all of that. So with that, this is really your time to discuss what we've put before you and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Jim. Um, Dave, I'll get to you in just one second. I'll just, one, one clarifying comment maybe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, you're really seeking feedback kind of right now on the, the base, uh, mechanisms. We'll have a discussion later around the nuance around, uh, allocation of how much uh, gets paid out of the floodplain properties versus the outside of the floodplain. So the assessments versus the privilege tax component, the details around exactly where that cut off, we're not getting into that right now. We're just getting into, do you agree with, um, or, or ask questions about the actual mechanisms, the continuation of the assessments? Um, with, uh, authority being transferred to the new district from the legacy districts and then the privilege tax from the new district to the cities. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, if there, the, the particulars matter. And if this board wants to try and incorporate any specifics into the legislation, now would be the time to talk about that. We believe having some flexibility in how we approach that and trying to maintain flexibility for future boards is likely, uh, a benefit that we should consider as we move through this process.
Thank you. I saw Dave's hand up first. We'll go with Dave and then, uh, in order of hands up.
Yes, I, um, I want to thank the staff for meeting with the East County, uh, group, uh, last week. We've also got a meeting, uh, that we're getting ready for to, uh, for tomorrow, uh, with a smaller group. But, uh, this due diligence memo, I don't recall seeing that before, anything like that. And, uh, but yes?
It's new.
It's new. Okay. Well, it's very interesting because it shows that even with the, uh, kind of multi-different geographic tiers, um, approach, your experts, whoever they were, were able to come up with a legally defensible fee system. Complicated, yes, but it would be much simpler. And I had our city attorney, Ed Trumpke, Troutdale City Attorney, um, look at this and, um, it, if we, if you took another stab at the fee with just a single managed floodplain paying the fee for operations, um, that greatly simplifies it. And, uh, I don't think we have, I don't think it's been given a fair enough chance. Um, Mr. Trumpke, our attorney did talk to, uh, it was David Ashton, the, uh, port's attorney. He, uh, you had indicated that the port couldn't possibly charge of passenger per passenger fee that that had been looked into. Mr. Ashton begs to differ. That could be done if it was done in the right way. They, uh, they, and he had an example, which They uh, they, and he had an example, which I only learned about it this morning of, of some sort of sewer fee that was charged per airline at the airport, went all the way to the uh federal circuit in Washington D C, and it was found to be defensible. And they could charge that way under the F A A regulations as long as it was done in the right way. This needs to be studied more. You've heard my objections. I won't start spouting my objections to this property tax approach that you've cobbled together uh and that I still don't fully understand, but it, the my request right now is that we be, that the uh details of this analysis of by whoever it was that you have in this due diligence memo uh that did the, the, did the defensible fee structure, that that details of that be shared with us. Please.
So I, I'm, I'm happy. I'd love to understand a little bit more what details you are seeking. And I guess what I think we've tried to be clear is that it's legally defensible. It's technically challenging, politically difficult, and very expensive. Uh well, and the analysis that we provided demonstrates that going to a single fee-based approach on the floodplain with the broader uh flood safety tax on the entire district uh even if you assume free collection, which is unrealistic, and you assume a hundred percent collection, which is madness. It still costs more for East County than what we're proposing. So I, I just need to highlight that for you.
Well, yes, I, I do understand that. And that's if it's done the way it was analyzed to be done, but the um all right, what I'm talking about is what, how was the fee that was legally defensible structured? That was in the, in the first, at the bottom of the first page of this three-page memo. Uh, how was it done? It didn't, doesn't explain the details. It just says it was very complicated.
I don't think that, and I think what I have a, the similar question to Dave. The final, there was never a final report from Eco Northwest. We had gotten some feedback and they were working on numbers, and that's when you guys discovered that the revenue wasn't gonna work. And we pivoted away from that, but there never was a loop closed on what the final Eco Northwest product was, because we moved to looking at the revenue. The difficulties with the revenue collection. And so I'd be interested in the same information, which is whatever the final Eco Northwest model spit out.
So that was presented at the October or November meeting, but um Seth, your point is valid that there was not a summary final report. We did structure those reports to be a series of technical memos. And then there would have been sort of a, a final summary and we um so that is a, a gap um as we went through this due diligence and the kind of uh had actually implemented was found to be a huge challenge. Um but as far as the model results, those were presented, and I think it's the November meeting and Echo presented those. And then all the technical memos and uh the times that Echo came to the board um summarized that includes uh those different methodologies. So I think we can pretty quickly share all of that information, but uh to Seth's point, there is the gap. There's not a final summary memo because we actually still have a contract open with Echo. They've been supporting us as we've found these other things. And so we're not at the summation point.
Seth, was that your question or, or not?
No, I, I have a separate follow-up. Um I don't think that, at least the way that the O R S implementation challenges are proposed um is work. I think that there's some additional challenges that we haven't encountered specifically. The idea of allowing one local government entity to tax another is going to get significant opposition just on a policy basis from possibly special districts, the League of Oregon Cities and the Association of Counties. It's a can of worms that has not necessarily ever been open to allow one local government to tax, have taxing authority on another. I think that uh a more limited approach and one that would get less pushback would be to allow the collection of the utility on the utility bills by the underlying cities explicitly as a privileged tax that wouldn't then need to be passed through to the flood safety district, because I, if I remember correctly, that was the issue that Jeff talked about was Portland didn't want to assume the liability for the free collection structure and wanted that, that wanted to be indemnified and for that liability to be passed on to the flood safety district. And the flood safety district can't charge a privilege tax. It's only authorized to structure as a fee. But if Portland collected it and sent it over as one check and had the ability to do that, then they could use their general government authority to issue a privilege tax. And so what I would, what I think might be a more workable model is to allow the cities or the people who are collecting on your behalf to use their general purpose authority explicitly as a privilege tax and not necessarily need to change so that the flood safety district can issue a privilege tax on those local governments. I think that you're gonna, that's gonna be a much harder road to hoe. Uh and I did reach out. I'm on the league's finance and taxation committee. I did reach out to a couple of members to kind of do a poll on whether or not that's something that would be opposed. And the general consensus was any, any ability for a county or metro or a special district to impose a tax on a city as a general principle would be opposed. So just wanted to offer that and maybe think spend some more time looking at this before we start going too far down that road and start bumping up against um some unknowns. So that's my, that's the comment that I raised my hand for.
I, I appreciate the comment and um certainly will learn whether there's going to be opposition. And I would, the only thing I want to share is that we have the authority now. The legacy districts are taxing local governments. So it's not unprecedented, but these are very valid points and uh I would also say the cities, the cities have the authority to impose a privilege tax now, so I would need your help. Because I believe it was Wood Village that wanted to be told they had to do it. And so help me think through that, that tranche of this challenge, if you would.
Yeah. And I know you guys have some taxing authority currently, but the authority that you're looking for, you don't have. Otherwise, we wouldn't need to go to the legislature to get it. This is, this is a new, a new authority that we currently don't have. And the reason why we had mentioned that was for us, it would need to be explicit in the legislation to allow for us to collect this as a privileged tax because we have charter provisions to say we can't implement a new tax without a vote of the people. And that's where it gets prob, that's where it gets problematic for us is if we have to collect this and it is a privileged tax, then we have to take it to a vote, which is not something our council wants to do.
Got it. So we, we could, we could cover that with a legislative change. Thank you. Understood.
Thanks, Seth. Uh Nancy.
Thanks. This has been so interesting. I kind of forgot my question. Um so I might actually just yield right now. I'll think of it.
We'll, we'll bring it back to you. Uh Emerald.
Um I agree. It's the, the conversation takes a lot of twists and turns. And when you've had your hand up for a while, you might forget why you handed up. Um Council Rama, um it, I uh the conversation between um Mr. Trumpkey and David Ashton is such an interesting example of how two people could talk to the same attorney and might draw a different conclusion. Um so the, the issue that, and we should take it offline and make sure that we just have a complete understanding of this. But the issue around um a fee tagged to passengers or airport users would be that of revenue diversion um which the F A A takes really seriously, as do airlines. Um and David was referencing a lawsuit that took place um twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen against the airlines uh to the city of Portland around revenue diversion related to stormwater fees. Um this question and this area would come down to what the levy protects. Um does the levy protect the airport? Yes. Does it protect only the airport? No. So the conclusion that I drew from speaking with our attorney and others is that this would not be legally viable. And I, and there's a lot of reasons that it would come into question as uh as to political liability as well. But we should probably just make sure that our attorneys who are um talking about what the facts are, have a consistent understanding of all of the elements that would go into that type of calculation.
Thank you, Emerald. Mary Helen.
I remembered my question. Um and it's for Nancy. Um if you could remind me, because my memory is a little bit foggy. But when the drainage districts um changed, made an agreement with the city to collect stormwater fees, and then the city was going to reimburse the drainage districts. My role at those meetings was mainly to check people in and keep them from throwing their chairs at each other. I mean, there was most volatile community meeting I'd ever been in. Um and, and I'm not exaggerating. Maybe Corky was there too, but it was sort of like run for cover. Um and
He was throwing his chair. What do you mean?
Well, I, I mean, it, it's one of those, you don't know what to do because you can't believe it's happening. Um Susan Bartel and I were hiding behind a overturned conference table. So, but that aside, that's just sort of like um storytelling. Anyway, if Nancy could speak to that, because I think that had issues related to how people were going to be charged on their um sewer bill, stormwater sewer bill, how, how B S was going to collect that or the Water Bureau. And there was a lot of contention, and I don't think anybody walked away from it thinking it was wonderful, but and Corky might want to chime in too. But I think that kind of relates to how cities might view, or if there's anybody left at the city besides Nancy and Mike Jordan that remember those things going on. I think it might be enlightening. And if not, then you can tell me another day.
Well, um I do remember that. I think a lot of people do. I don't remember that particular meeting because I think Susan went and said to me. Um but I remember city council when this, when it was passed. And it, it actually, it was interesting at the time was because uh Rivergate, which is not inside the drainage districts, when we did a rate reform, it's like, oh, wait, they need to pay stormwater fees too. So they, they were just given, okay. Next couple of months, next year, whatever it was, you're paying stormwater fees. Uh just look for that. Which was a different than the policy decision within the districts was quite different. Uh I think there was a four-year ramp up um instead of all at once. And there was a specific discount given because it was in the district. Um I do want to clarify. So there was, there was a lot of policy decision about that. And I would say that it from what other people have mentioned, that the political um needs, issues, whatever they are, they're very strong and they will, there's politics, there's fairness, they're not always in alignment and one doesn't, fairness doesn't always win. Um and, and I'm not talking about this one in particular. I'm just talking about there's different politics influences decisions in different ways. And I think that's what we are as a board, trying to navigate, and certainly the staff are. Um I will make one clarification, and that is we didn't promise to reimburse the drainage districts. We did come up with a fee structure with a nexus, just to be clear, that um we would
I wasn't being clear. So yeah, there was some sort of agreement where the city would pay the districts, whatever. And I, I yeah, that's long gone in a banker box, so.
Yeah, no, actually, we're still paying it. That's our um stormwater fee thing that we pay for influence stormwater into M C D D. So um anyhow. So does that answer your question? You wanted me to weigh in on something?
Well, it was more so I didn't misspeak about terminology, et cetera, but that it was a very um I'm not delicate, but a very political and like you said, difficult to be fair um process that took like four or five years to even get to the, the point of agreement. And there was never any um what am I gonna say? Agreement. Um and I know you can, you can't make everybody happy all the time, but this just seemed highly contentious. And I don't know with the climate of today, if that would cause more grief within the cities with the reorganization of Portland. I'm just speaking of Portland, but other cities saying, oh, now you're gonna have to pay X amount of money to, you know, whatever for stormwater fees and then how that gets imposed on the citizens. And that to me would be a really tough sell. So that's all. But yeah, thank you for clarifying and putting it in a more logical sense than I was able to.
Yeah, well, it's definitely uh on our, imprinted on our psyches, those of us. And I, I'll just, you know, I think Eric said it last meeting um about, nobody's gonna like this. It's true. Nobody's gonna like this. Tell you what, if we didn't do it and we didn't make these uh collect this extra money and we fell out of accreditation and we could not develop in the floodplain, no one would like that either. And it'd be way worse. So I think we just have to understand that no one's going to give us a pat on the back for coming up with a solution because everyone's gonna hate it. It's like okay.
I promised to pat you all on the back if you
Thank you. But it did remind me of my question, which was uh measure five and the other one, which number I can't remember. I think bakes in inequities into our tax structure. All that compression stuff is generally inequitable. I don't think based on how I remember it was sold. I don't think it has worked out that way. Um but I'm really um influenced by the practicalities of how we can, can collect the money. Um also the political, political realities of how we can collect the money. And even though I don't like the compression by measure five, I think we've limited it to where it's already felt. And, and if I look at the numbers, maybe there's a little less compression going forward if we do it all in the same uh structure. I thought I saw a slide that all of the compression like decreases in F Y twenty-five. Um but I think the um, the privilege tax, however it works out, some way of uh doing a tax and I, what you said, Seth, was really interesting. However, that works out, it does seem like a, a way that's less expensive overall. And no matter which agency is collecting the money and giving it to which other agency, it's the same people who are paid. And so if we can make the collections um or the like streamlining all the administrative and logistical pieces of how to collect the money and spend it, then everyone's getting a better value for money.
Good points, Nancy. Uh Kenny.
Okay, uh thanks, Steve. Um okay, I guess my, my question would be like presently, the legacy districts collect the assessments, right? And then they pay the urban and they pay for everything that's going on. And so that board's responsible then for that money. So if we're transferring that authority, then the urban would be responsible? Or it would still be, I believe it would still be the legacy district board as long as they're in place, correct?
Um there, we can get into the whole dissolution process, but the idea is that the future urban board would maintain that authority. And that would be revenue along with the privilege tax that would allow dissolution to occur. So you're essentially transferring the authority that the legacy districts currently have to the new agency. So no, the legacy districts wouldn't have a voice going forward once the transition moves. And Lori, Colin, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that I think is the intent.
Is that correct, Colin?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and so I'm just trying to figure this out. If you got a fiduciary responsibility as a legacy district board member and those assessments are being passed, how are you fulfilling that obligation to the landowners?
There's a, there's a transition to the new board who would take on that obligation for the entire district. And as soon as that first dollar comes in and we have the regularly elected board, appointed board, then the authority transfers upon their call. This board transitions to an elected board and that board calls for dissolution and the legacy districts are dissolved.
Right. But the legacy district's also responsible for making sure that we have capital funding.
That responsibility. Yeah, that transfers over to the new board and the new agency as well, under the statute and the program we're discussing. I regret if that's not clear.
Yeah, I
So there's a new entity that gets formed that takes on all these obligations, right?
Right.
Then there's that, that new board or this board until the new board is seated, we'll discuss the debt distribution plan and the call for dissolution. But it'll be the urban board and it's only the urban board that has authority to do that.
And but they would have that authority before the legacy districts. And but they would have that authority before the legacy districts are dissolved and those boards dissolve.
That's correct. It's a stepwise process outlined in the statute where that has to occur.
Yeah, and I think that would be, okay, that'd be hard. Okay, thanks.
Okay, I hope I answered your question. We did prepare for you and I have a regret that it didn't get into your original packet, but we did work on a a sort of decision timeframe. We thought we would actually talk to you about it at your next meeting since we just emailed you yesterday. But you can look through that, Tanny, and then give me a call if you have questions and it it looks like um, we've got that penciled in anyway for your consideration.
Thank you.
And yes, you are reading that correctly, Nancy. Thanks, Tanny. Eric.
Um, yeah, I want to go through page fifty-nine and in particular, those three bullet points that you have on the problems with collecting a stormwater management fee. Um, and in particular, just so that I understand it, so um, one estimate to implement our stormwater management fee uh in terms of the computer program is about a million bucks. Is that correct?
You wanna?
Yes, so it's um, the other technical things associated with that as well as programming. So uh, the uh, customer service, all the training, uh, so there's a bunch of administrative pieces uh that necessary as far as startup fees. Um, so differentiating startup costs, excuse me, from ongoing uh costs.
Okay. So that includes training and getting everybody up to speed. And the second one was that if we did do that, what you're saying is that you have several customers, a handful, that would have assessments of greater than a hundred thousand dollars per year. And then twenty that have stormwater management fees under the Eco Northwest program of greater than ten thousand dollars a year, correct?
That, well, I I guess the Eco Northwest piece might be irrelevant to it, but it it, there's the current cost for um customers in the managed floodplain and the very large cost is the issue.
Misunderstanding me, Colin, I'm sorry. Let me try. I'm I'm trying to get a sense of how large a number of customers that we need to contact, and it seems like it's going to be less than twenty-five.
No, the issue is much more political and there is a a letter that the city of Portland, um, you know, as they've been considering this internally, uh, even and I can't, I'm not going to quote what the particular number on price sensitivity is. But even something like, you know, your uh property might have, say, a four hundred dollar assessment and you would have a one hundred dollar quarterly increase on your utility bill, and that was seen as a a pretty major issue. Uh, so one, the Water Bureau would be able to speak to that, um, and some of the price sensitivity. But uh, you're correct as far as the absolute number of those very, very high um, cost assessments.
Right. And so what we're talking about is, you know, when we go through some form of this work, we would have to take on the responsibility for uh outreach to the payers to say, you see the stormwater management fee, that's where you pay to the city of of Portland. This other stormwater management fee, that's where you pay to the urban district. Right? And that would be the responsibility of the urban district to do, correct? And then we get into the session of they put a hard no on collecting a fee of greater than a thousand dollars? Is that correct?
The hard no is collecting the service fee.
For any property over a thousand dollars?
Uh, the complications related to programming, customer service and other things, that I think the the better way to understand it is that the city of Portland, uh, the challenges at this time would be too great to collect the service fee.
That's independent of extra challenges on the floodplain, shifting from an assessment collection methodology to a fee or charge based. So there's, there's two, two layers of complexity based on the geography.
All right. So so help me understand that. Um, one is politically, they don't want to have the responsibility to say to any of their customers, um, your stormwater management fee is now a thousand dollars per quarter. Um, but you, you have to go to the urban district to pay that, correct?
So some of it is definitely the customer service. I I think there's a more fundamental piece too, which is about um sort of carrots and sticks, I guess, the willingness of the Water Bureau to shut off service, water service for an individual customer for non-payment or partial payment, um, questions around uh, you know, sort of currently, we can, means can be put on to people's uh property tax. There's other means that we have for collection of non-payment. Um, and so real challenges um seen at the, at the collection of the utility bill.
Right. And so, but but we need to know this because people ask, well, it's a water bill. You don't pay the water bill. You know, they're going to cut off the service. If you don't pay the stormwater management fee that goes to B E S, they cut off the service. And so we need to be very mindful of that. And this third element is really to say, when we start to look at when we switch from a an assessment basis to a fee basis, right? What really end up, ends up happening based upon the work that we had last month in August is that the largest proportion of that goes to government agencies that are really compressed. And these are typically the ones in Penn One. Um, and so in that third bullet point, significant number of businesses and homeowners, but really it's, it's government because the compression effect of the government agencies was nine hundred thousand dollars, is that correct? And businesses about six hundred thousand?
Think, yeah, that's about right.
Okay, so a million five in total. And so most of that's going to be borne by Parks and Rec, right? If we went to a fee-based service.
Well, we're asking them to already make up that compression difference under our proposal. And remember that there are the large bills on the floodplain that are existing today. And then there are bills that will go up exponentially from the shift away from a compressed state to a new state. So the N that you have to communicate with becomes much larger. So there's, yeah, there's, we're, we're, we're factoring in the compression under the assessment scenario by asking for additional contributions. I'm not, I'm not sure I'm answering your question. I apologize if I'm not.
So so I can get into that part of later. Um, the final element is what happens to our current I G A for stormwater management?
I think.
That's about like nine hundred thousand dollars a year in terms of revenue to.
Seven hundred, I think, in the current year, roughly. And that's, that's part of the conversation we're having with Portland. What we see under our proposal or any proposal is that some amount of that revenue is going to come in from the city of Portland, whether it's through a service agreement, um, through the compression payment or through the tax applied through the utilities in the, the city of Portland or their general fund.
Okay, so um, there, there will be a shift in terms of who bears the burden of, of this. It's pretty significant. If we went to a pure stormwater.
They'd say more, I'm not sure.
What would it be that the currently compressed public properties, P I R, Delta Park, et cetera, would now pay some element of a stormwater management fee, and that would really hit their budget. Um, and under the assessment proposal, it's status quo for their budgets. Uh, but if the stormwater management fee paid to the districts for the services we render to B E S goes away, then their budget goes down. Uh, so you're saying, Nancy, you're saying no. What am I?
Yeah, that, that cost shifts to the privilege tax. It's, it doesn't get eliminated. And then Portland, I believe, they haven't decided yet, but I think they're gonna recover that fee through some use of their stormwater system. So it's.
So so basically, it's a uh net benefit to B E S's budget.
Uh, I don't believe it is because it's going to be roughly the same amount of money coming from the same payers.
Yeah, so let me, let me just step back just a little bit. I, and thanks for letting me jump in here. Um, we've got some really, uh, we've got a nice little financial subcommittee going on at the city, and that's between the um, utility piece and the general fund piece are for that, for argument's sake, are two main forces of funding, sources of funding. Um, they're working out basically how, they all know that people in Portland are paying. So they're working out what's possible, what's the least amount of, like I was saying, least about admin and the most fair way to distribute these costs. Um, between and similar to what Emerald said earlier, like the rate payer funds, we have to be very careful with revenue diversion because they can only pay for some things, not for other things. And so we do have kind of a, it's not exactly a constant battle, it's maybe a constant tension, like um, the general fund bureaus are always hurting. You know, so are the utility bureaus, but not as much. And so, you know, city council has often said, well, what about it? And I'm like, well, if there's a rational nexus, that makes sense, then sure, we can, uh, you know, fund various things as long as, you know, if we get sued, we're gonna win. So we've been sued a lot. And we continue to be sued and we usually win, which is nice because, but it's because we have that line. So when you're talking about the uh benefit to B E S's budget and the benefit, uh, the loss to Parks budget, like whatever that is, um, just kind of think about it. Maybe it would be helpful to think about it. It's all city of Portland people paying. Everyone who lives here in our city are paying. I know it's the same for other cities. Um, we try to do it as equitable as possible, including having um a payment programs and discounts for people who can't pay. And um we can only do what is allowable under rate payer funds. And general funds have very little constraint in that way. And so we try and balance all those things together. And so big shout out to the staff from this district who are meeting with our financial staff because they're asking questions like I wouldn't even know to ask, which is awesome. And they're working through what would be the best way to do it, but it it's um I don't think that either Parks or B E S comes out on top with this. And I I'll just say that somehow the city is going to have to come up with a way to um have a rational nexus to collect, collect it cheaply and um send it to the new district.
See, my concern, Nancy, is the following. When, when we eliminate the stormwater I G A with B E S, what happens is that the people that reside in Penn Two end up paying more. Right? Because, you know, we have an assessment and then we provide a service to B E S for stormwater management. You pay off some money and that reduces the amount that we have to charge to the people that live in Penn Two. So under this current scenario where you've eliminated the I G A for stormwater management, that money that gets paid to Penn Two goes away. And so we in fact get billed twice. We get billed once as an assessment and once as a stormwater fee.
But there's not.
And that I think is, is inherently unfair.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Corky's been very patient. I just want to make sure. Yeah, I think you've made your point, Eric, and we can follow up with more information.
I will follow up with you, Steve.
Thank you. Um, Corky?
Yeah, I, and please do follow up on that. I I'd like to hear the answer to that too. Uh, I I wanted to circle back and I'll, I'll try and make it brief and and so you can move on, but uh, I want to circle back to the uh, assessment transfer um that Tanny brought up. Uh, on the slide, it says transfer assessment authority to U F S W Q D or the urban board. Are we actually talking about transferring assessment authority to, to the urban board? Or are we talking about transferring it to the future unnamed permanent board? We'll call it Prince, you know, the thing that goes by no name. Um, you know, uh, thank you, Nancy got that. All right. Um, yeah, so I wanted to clarify, it might just be a matter of terminology. Uh, who are we transferring that assessment authority to?
On the legacy, basically, the legislation would give the urban flood safety and water quality district the authority to impose property assessments on the managed floodplain. Okay, so the new board would have that authority depending on the timing of the election and the seating of the new board, the interim board might have that authority until the elected appointed board gets established.
Right. I thought I just heard you say U F S W Q D applied to two different boards.
There's one agency, there's an interim board, and then there's going to be the regular board that gets.
We don't know what their name is, so you can't call them U F S W Q D at this point.
I, I'm not, I'm not following that comment. I apologize.
And that might be my confusion.
Yeah, they'll, they'll still be the, it'll still be the urban flood safety, water quality district and it's set in statute. But there is the likelihood that there'll be sort of a doing business ads. So it'll be U F S W Q D, D B A, and then whatever that sort of.
So so let me back up and maybe we just call them urban board, the board that we have right now and the permanent board. So uh, so if I hear you correctly, we're going to transfer assessment authority to the U F S W Q D, the district. And that, so then my question is, are we transferring that assessment authority to the district under the the urban board? I, I, this is where it gets confusing because here's my point. The urban board has no maintenance or operations, authority, responsibility, nothing, right? That's the legacy board. And then the permanent, the Prince board, you know, they, they will take over assessment authority and uh, operations, maintenance, so forth. So want to make sure we don't end up kind of tripping over ourselves. Like I'm tripping on myself with the terminology right now. I want to make sure that doesn't happen to other people too. Does that make sense?
I, I think it does. We have to be very cautious to avoid double counting the revenue, right? I think is where you're going. So we can only tax people one time for this service. And so at a certain point in time, when the legislation gets passed, it'll have an effective date and revenue will switch from the legacy districts to the urban district. And the urban district, that revenue will come, that revenue will come with the obligations to maintain the assets of the legacy districts.
And at that point, we'll have the new board members that were voted on in May twenty twenty-four in place, I presume. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm after. And I, so I think when I saw that transfer assessment authority on the slide, I was thinking, perhaps, it sounds like improperly, that we're transferring that authority to this current urban district board, which didn't make any sense to me, so.
If, if, if we did that, you would be running the day-to-day operations of the.
And we don't have, and that's not in O R S five fifty, so we can't do that.
So so the timing of that becomes important, and that's why you see a May election with a June joint meeting and a July start date for the new board.
All right. So my suggestion there is, thank you for clarifying on that. My suggestion is maybe uh, we start getting, because we've run into this before, but years back, you know, maybe we start getting a little more careful about the current urban board versus the Prince board, you know, um. And and make sure that we're a little more careful about, you know, because we're going to get to that point real quickly where we're jumping back and forth, so.
Thanks. Good question. Thank, thank you for being persistent in helping me understand it. I hope, I hope we answered you.
You did. Thank you.
And Corky, a really important point that was part of your question too, is just as Jim said, can't double charge. Uh, I think part of your question too is we have to make sure that we don't miss an assessment, right? So that there's not a gap. Uh, so I think that's kind of embedded in your question. And um, I think just as far as language matters, uh, just because there's complications of those uh, that we were going through last week and earlier this week, uh, looking at the timeline too, is using the initial board, which is your currently seated board, you, um, and then the regular board, uh, which is partially elected and then partially um designated by the governor. Um, so we'll, we'll try to be really regimented with that, um, so that we're consistent. Appreciate that.
I didn't want money to be coming into one board and the responsibilities going to the other board. That would have been a mess, so, yeah.
Thanks, Corky. Uh, Mary Helen.
Corky both confused me and cleared me, but when he said he was tripping over himself, it made me get goosebumps because I tripped over myself and wound up six months still using a walker and a cane, so don't. I tripped over myself and wound up six months still using a walker and a cane. So don't do that. My point is, the confusion part is the proposal to assume the revenue that the legacy districts have already collected because as, am I assuming that that is the proposal that MCD to fund the current urban flood safe, too much, urban flood safety board? The proposal for that use of the drainage districts revenue funds, for instance, Penn Two has, I think, like two million dollars. Does that mean that they would assume that two million dollars and we as board supervisors basically would be dissolved because that's our responsibility is to pass a budget and spend the money that we've collected. And we already collected that money with the promise of past adopted budgets. Am I understanding that correctly?
I, I think so. I, what's going to happen is the urban board will vote on debt distribution plan among the various districts. And as we've talked with you before, there will be a net value of each district and, and the board in place at the time, the urban board, not the legacy board, will make a determination about any needs to, I don't know what words to use, but aggregate or segregate different pots of money that are coming in from the legacy districts. So the urban board, the urban board has the obligation to, to make that determination.
So in Mary Helen's accounting terms, and forgive me for those that have better ones than I do, the proposal is to take the money that Penn Two now has as revenue and give it to M C D D to, or M C D D to operate the functions of the interim board. So basically, okay, okay.
So maybe I can describe it. So here's how I think about it, Mary Helen. I draw a line in the sand and say at some point the legacy districts will stop operating and the urban district will start. And we have to make sure there's a clean line so that all of the expenses and all of the revenues move at the same time. So just think of that revenue authority, that transfer of that revenue authority is where you're hopping over that line. So it would be our intent to have that be clean, which is why we have in the timeline that it would be a July one start date. So that you're imposing the new assessments as the urban district. The assets and the liabilities of all of the legacy districts will follow over. So Penn Two, for example, has started the thirteenth avenue pipe project. There's liabilities associated with that that will come along that will, we will continue that project. So it will overlap the legacy districts and the urban district, but that project will keep going and will complete that. So I really just think of it as a line in the sand. And at some point when we hit that line, everything just gets added together and becomes the new district. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. And I'm going to go back to my simple terms again. So what the Penn Two board has proposed in a budget and promised to the rate payers that have given us money will happen. If there's any money left over, then that it jumps over that line in the sand into the next pot of money. So.
And the obligations continue too. So there's projects and things that have been started that will continue using that money in essence.
This might give Eric Mulander a little bit of a heart jolt, but if we decided as a board to have a, you know, a budget adjustment and say, we want to give all the money back to the landowners or we want to do something with the money that's not in the current budget so that we spend that money, we could do, I mean, this is crazy, but it, I've heard this from the, a lot of neighborhood meetings that I've gone to. We can do whatever we want with that money until that line in the sand happens.
You can do that, but I think it would, it would put us in a position where we would have to look at that project and determine whether we had a source of funding to continue with it.
Okay. So you're, you're not counting on us giving you two million dollars for the current operational budget. It's something in the future, but whatever's left over of whatever spent in the C I P, that's when it happens.
Correct.
Okay. Thank, that cleared that up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Helen. Thank you, Lori. Okay. We're running up against our time. Seth, you got the last question, comment of the day before we hook to adjourn.
Yeah. I just kind of to wrap some ideas up that Eric and Mary Helen had talked about with the legacy districts. You know, the first year of this new Prince Board, there's going to be a significant amount of revenue coming in. There's going to be sixteen million dollars for operating revenue. And the debt service on the hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty million dollar bond. That's going to be another twelve to eighteen million dollars here. So year one, there's going to be thirty million dollars coming into the district. And I think the difficulty that we're going to have to wrestle with and that I'm still wrapping my head around is, you know, everybody's going to have to pay more. You know, the existing districts assessments are like eight million dollars. It's proposed that they're going to go up ten to twenty percent plus some bond money. But at the same time, we're going to try, we're going to go out and we're going to try and collect another twenty million dollars from people who don't live in the floodplain. That's what the ask is, is we need to go out and put money in for our operations to support the budget. And most of the bond fund debt service is going to be paid by people outside of the current managed floodplain. And kind of Mary Helen, the, what I would say to the person who's like, well, why don't we just spend all this money is the problem I'm concerned with as a city is getting buy off from my council that this is a, this is a fair treatment. That everyone who's not living in the floodplain kicking in twenty million dollars is fair and the thing that we need to do. And that's, that's a not a guarantee that you can make that case. And I think that for the cities, not only that, but we have, we, we're going to need to put this on our bill in order to collect it on the behalf for something that directly benefits people that primarily live in the managed floodplain. And so it's a needle we have to thread of everybody's, and I'm going to echo Eric Mueller's favorite saying is everybody's not going to like it because everybody's going to end up having to pay more. For nobody, nobody's going to come out of this. Nobody's going to come out of this a winner. Everybody's going to end up opening up their checkbook and paying more. And the question is, can we find a solution that we can get past the general public, all of the partner organizations and the legacy district that spreads that out? Fair, you know, manner that's, we can sell as fair to the people that we have to report back to. And I think that that's kind of what my, how the approach I take and what I'm trying to figure out is how do we get there as a board in a way that we can, we can propose that with, and say, this is not great, but it's the best, it's the best option we have on the table. So those are my comments.
And I would just say in a first response, Seth, we are looking at the debt issuance because there, we're looking at the cash flow issues around the project needs and the debt issuance. And we'll, and Carol and Gogan will be talking a little bit more to the challenges with issuing debt for a new organization when they come next time. But one of the things that we're looking at is that the first year, we, we will probably look at some sort of a privately sourced debt, probably a bank offering instead of a regular public issuance. It's going to be much less money than what we will need in total. We'll probably also look at tranching the issuances. So we won't issue if we decide on a hundred and fifty million dollars, we won't issue all of that at the same time. When you do your budget for general obligation debt, you are only to collect what you need for that year for the debt service. So in year one, for the people across the district, it's going to be significantly less money than what we will need in the future years. So they're not going to see everything hit all at once. We haven't modeled all of that spending yet, but I can say confidently when we look at the cash flow that we won't need to issue a hundred percent of the debt. So we won't hit the full funding of the general obligation repayment in year one. So folks are not going to see a hundred percent of that in year one.
No, and thank you for clarifying. And I think my larger point is that of the two hundred and fifty million dollars, ninety to ninety-five percent of that's going to be paid by people who don't live in the managed floodplain. Because of, we have to do it through property tax and a geo bond, which is, which is a fairly big, it's a fairly big ask to get the city council to be behind something that's going to benefit people and support something that for people who aren't their constituency or a very small part of the constituency. And that's going to be part of the challenge. And I think that every one of us is going to have to weigh those challenges in order to come up with something that works for everyone.
I think you're right. And one of the things that we are still pulling together for you all is the information on the geo bond costs by, by jurisdiction. So you'll know how much is, is going to be funded by your city. So that information is forthcoming. We're trying to make sure that we have the correct assessed values by city before we provide you with that information, but you will be seeing that in the near future.
Thank you, Lori. Thanks, Seth. Good, good comments. Good discussion today, folks. Lots of information exchanged. That was the point. Thank you, staff. Great work as usual. And we will see you next time.
I would just urge anybody, I, I have a list of some follow up calls that I'll be making, but honestly, if any of you have any questions, I really hope you'll email me or, or give me a call. And feel free obviously to reach out to Steve if you'd rather do that. And I really appreciate the nature of the questions today. They were very thoughtful and very well posed. And are helping improve our thinking about all of this. So thank you.
Good meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.